Very good. Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of September 27th, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. This is the second meeting of the month where we typically have a shorter meeting, but we get our committee and board reports. And so Steve, for the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough just to switch over to the screen there so they can take a look at what's on the agenda for tonight. At the beginning, there'll be just a few highlights of the supervisor's tentative budget proposal for 2018, if you'd like to stick around for that. Okay, very good. Announcements, I only have one announcement, which is the Red Hook Fire Company is having their fall event, October 19th, I believe that's a Thursday, and it starts at 5:00 PM, I believe, 5 to 7 o'clock. That's the only announcement I have. Does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? Okay, hearing none. It's time for public comments. Would anybody like to make some public comments? Fred, would you like to make some comments?
I've never heard before, sir.
Yes, this would be your opportunity now or at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Fred, Don Brasso, I'm here about the property on 132 Williams Road, Red Hook, New York. About a user road. I've been dealing with this with the town for maybe the last four years. And everybody just making up their own rules and regulations as far as I'm concerned. I had a lawyer before. It took me four years to get a garage. We found out it was a user road. We had the property with my family over 50 years. We had nothing but problems with the we were deceived from not the town. I don't know who you want to put the blame on or whatever. We were always told by the town supervisor that they had the, they owned the road and it was 60 feet that we couldn't, we couldn't do nothing with it. They had to ride away. Then I found out from an old timer that it was a user road. Rick and Theresa, I don't know her last name.
Burke.
Burke. Throughout the years, turned around and told me they owned the road, you couldn't do the garage. My family was there, we had to put a shed 60 feet away from the garage because that's what we were told. That they owned the road. It was sold to us. So they deceived us. And when they deceived us, they, how I found out was that they wanted to put a pipe in the end of the road of my property. I have 4 and 1/2 big as a property. And Rick came over to me and said to me, he goes, "Freaking, we put the pipe in." He goes, "It's a school bus for safety." I said, "I have no problem with that." Then I'm saying, "Why did he even ask me to do it? They have 60 feet. Why didn't he even ask me?" So then I pursued it. And this is what we found out, that we were lied to for 50 years that we had the house. Took me four years to get a garage. They put snow on my house. They damaged my house with his boat. And I got a lawyer just to keep the snow off the house and they widened the road in 2011. I had a lawyer for that. They both came to the house. We had a meeting, the whole thing. And then I was told that they had it in 2000, they moved the road over in 2004. My lawyer that I had, Theresa Keller, said it was 2011 when they moved the road over. They Googled it. So I just want to know what my rights are and what the town's rights are. Or is the town going to do, not everybody here, is the town going to do whatever they want? And I gotta put up with it.
Okay. Fred, I can't give you any answers to that.
That's right. I'm just letting everybody know.
We appreciate your coming here and speaking to us. And if there's any other information, you know, you can provide that to the Highway Department?
I did already.
Okay.
And they're going to do what they want, like I said. Not get anywhere. They blacked out the road now. I was told, and my wife was told, they were going to marry it. They did a bad job in front of my house. I got pictures of it and everything. I got the survey here. And since we're going through this whole thing, the survey had it done twice as I bought the house, because my mother and father died and everything else. And nobody said it was a user road then. So I have a couple copies here if anybody wants them. When it comes to the end of the turn by my house, it's supposed to be in the middle of the road. So what I'm going to do, I already went to the post office, I went to the schools, I went everywhere. I'm doing this for safety. Like I said, I, since I'm up here, I must have dragged people out on Route 9 because they were on their cell phone. They crashed into the pole over here in when they had the old stove place on Taconic. And these are straightaways. The people on cell phones, they crack, they crash. I dragged the little girl, the girl out, 17, 18 years old. She broke her nose in a collision when I put it to the side. And she said to me, "Where's my cell phone?" So there's only a matter of time before somebody gets hurt or killed. And I got grandchildren there, and I'm not going to put up with it. The other thing I want now is that now that they gave me my four feet back, or Theresa gave me my four feet back, now you're telling me that, well, you can't come on my property. So we have to get this thing straightened out, you know, who's right, who's wrong. And if I have to get a lawyer, then tell me I get a lawyer and, you know, this is the route I'm going to go. Because there's a lot of accidents on that road, on that turn, that are not even reported. Mr. Burns's daughter got into an accident over there. It wasn't even reported. It got into an accident and it wasn't that bad, so they just took care of it on the side. So I know there's a lot of accidents that are there that are not reported. The school buses know that that's their route. They know it's a bad turn and everything else. What's going to happen is that somebody else is going to come around that turn and we're going to be on the cell phone. School bus are going to be watching out or whatever they want to do. We also have four new people that live on the road. That up in a, maybe a quarter, half a mile, a quarter mile up into the woods. They're all around us. So I talked to all them. I'm going to get a petition letter signed or whatever. I'm just going to let you guys know, I'm not going to wait till something happens to one of my grandkids or my children. And if it's the end of the road, if I had to fix it, you guys would make me fix it. So this is a hidden secret for 50 years since I'm there, that it's a user road. I don't know what the problem is, that for safety and to move the road closer to my house because you're afraid of a telephone pole, it doesn't make no sense to me. I got pictures of that. We were in the house my father with a 56 Chevy, but that was a dirt road. And I can't, I can't keep putting up this, this, going back and forth for four years and see what's going on. And then it's all, "Well, it's your property. Now we can't go on it." I just want an answer because then you give me an answer. And whatever I have to do to get a lawyer, then that's the route I'm going to go. It cost me $7,000 for a lawyer to get my garage, to keep snow off my house, which Rick and Theresa turned around and said, "It'll never happen." That this is the way it is. Our trucks can't make a U-turn. They can't do this. They can't do that. And this is the way it is, Fred. Out of their mouth, and this is what they said to me and my family. I got the lawyer. They can't put snow on my house no more. They widened the road. I got my garage. And this has just got to stop.
Okay, Fred, I apologize for interrupting you, but I do want to make sure you've had an opportunity to speak and then
No, I'm good. I'm glad.
continue with our meeting. I would just make a suggestion, whatever your request is, if you would just put it in writing so we can understand what it is you're asking for.
I still want, I want to show everybody the map.
You're welcome to leave with the town clerk.
That's fine.
As said, and this one will be available for everyone.
Okay.
Okay?
You want an alley?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then when, when you can sort of maybe summarize your thoughts and deliver it to us.
Well, I was hoping I did it tonight, but I will. Like I said, it's my first time here. There's a lot to be said. And like I said, I'm paying taxes just like everybody else. And if you're not going to do it for safety, well, what's the rule on the user road? And then everybody can understand this. I went to three lawyers and even Anna Kershner, I think her name is, in town. She said she could take care of it. And then I gave her $2,000 and she had no idea what she was doing.
Okay. All I'm suggesting, Fred, is whatever your request is, if you would articulate that in an email to us and we can take a look at that and we can share that. Obviously, you'll share that with the Highway Superintendent and we can share it with our town attorney. You okay?
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, does anybody else want to make some public comments this evening? Okay. Very good. We have, the first item of the agenda is the supervisor's tentative budget proposal, which was filed this afternoon with the town clerk. And I just have a few slides for the folks at home. Hit some highlights, presumably.
Do we have it?
You don't have it, Harry. You will get it at the end of the meeting. I don't know if you've heard, but yeah, I have the booklets all for you. All the budget information and worksheets that Anna's prepared for you. There's just a couple of highlights. And we can schedule some tentative budget workshop dates tonight as well. The 2018 budget keeps taxes flat again this year for the second consecutive year. This is because we've been able to maintain higher fund balances. Our fund balances are increasing year over year. Some other highlights, as you know, our credit rating was raised in 2016. Just a few weeks ago, we heard from the comptroller's office about our risk assessment ratio, which is down from last year to 1.7%. The fiscal stress, just to give you some idea, a community that's at the bottom level of having some type of fiscal stress is 45%. So we're nearly perfect with our 1.7% rating from the comptroller's office. And you have a couple pages that show you how that ratio was developed. Our credit rating, you see, is the next bullet point there. So we're able to keep our taxes flat in this proposal while we're still making increasing investments in the community. As you know, we're finishing up on the Route 9 sidewalk project. We've completed the town hall parking lot project and some improvements. We are also looking at renovating portions of our existing recreational park. Right now, we are completely redoing our tennis courts, which have failed after many years. And we are also looking at making an investment in new playgrounds. And finally, beginning construction of a recreational park annex land on the other side of Linden Avenue. These investments you'll see are in the 2018 and 2019 budgets. The other investment that we are prepared in the budget to make is retrofitting our town campus property with clean energy and energy efficient upgrades. So that's our HVA system, which is now approaching 30 years of age. Our air source heat pumps, looking at insulation, solar on the highway garage. We're able to do this because of increasing efficiencies and probably the first thing we should acknowledge is we can't do it all by ourselves on the local level, which is why we spend so much time applying for grants. And we've been very successful. Projects that we are implementing right now have been supported by these grants. And you can see how significant they are. They total well over a million dollars. We have, over the course of the last two years, done some reorganization in our staffing. And that is currently saving us about $50,000 a year. To give you some idea, $50,000 a year, if you take it from annual expenses, that could service a $700,000 project over 20 years. So when we talk about cutting expenses and putting that money into investment in our community, those are some examples. We refinanced our debt early last year. That had a one-time saving, calculated to be somewhere around $124,000. It may in fact turn out to be higher because interest rates did in fact move up since, and rather significantly, since we did that refinancing. We are looking at lower utility costs, dramatically lower, especially if we do in fact implement that municipal solar farm. And you saw a presentation a couple meetings ago where over 25 years, we may save taxpayers about $1.5 million with that project. And subsequent to that analysis, Ethel Hudson applied for their rate increase, which was much higher than the calculation that we in order to project savings. So that could be understated. We also have the LED streetlight conversion project, which we are in the midst of, which you saw in previous meetings, was calculated to save taxpayers over $80,000 during the lifetime of the LED bulbs. And then for those residents within the lighting districts, another $140,000. So you'll be receiving your booklets. Other highlights, the budget has salary increases of 2%. Continues that rate increase in the same level of benefits. Dollars allocated towards benefits for our valued employees. And we project that at the end of 2018, there'll probably still be small increases in fund balances for that year as well. So those are the highlights in the proposal. And I'm wondering if you all might have your calendars available and we can set up for the public while we're here in front of them, some tentative dates to meet on the budget. I notice we have quite a few conflicts with evenings and meetings and some of us aren't available. And oftentimes, this room is being used for another board meeting, but I have two that may appear not to have conflicts for town hall are October 12th, which I believe is a Thursday, and October 18th, which I believe would be a Wednesday. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would those two dates potentially work for you all?
October 12th is a Thursday?
Is a Thursday?
And the 8th is a
18th.
18th.
Would be Wednesday.
What were you thinking, Robert?
Whatever time works for folks. 7:30, is that, that works for you generally, that timeframe?
Yeah, Thursday, I would be tough. I'd need to get here before 7:30.
Okay.
Wednesday, I could do it early.
So we're going to make the second one 7:30? Can we make the first one 7:00? It's a
That's fine with me.
It's a little
No, if I first, I'd replace first.
Which, what, I'm sorry, what did you say?
The 12th is at 7:30.
Thursday at 7:30?
The 18th is at 7:00.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
In the 18th, is it, what time is the 18th?
7:00.
7:00?
7:00, okay. And, and I put backwards.
And then we can see if we need additional meetings after those two. As you know, we need to hold a public hearing no later than the Thursday after Election Day. I believe that's September 9th. And we need to adopt the budget by, I'm sorry, did I say September 9th? November 9th? We need to adopt the budget by November 20th. Okay, so
Now, is the 12th the earliest? We can, we can meet as a group to look at this?
You know, it, it is. And it's primarily because of town hall and the conflicts in town hall, Harry. I'm sorry to say, not so much with certainly I'm, I'm available all evenings. Anna's available for our our needs every night except for Mondays.
Which is, Tuesdays at where, down here is a book with other things? Like on the 3rd and 17th and stuff like that?
Exactly. Tuesday, I'm at the supervisor's and mayor's meeting that, that night. And then I know we have other board and committee meetings. There's a communications committee meeting, I think, the following evening. So yeah, that first week in October is unfortunately all booked up. And then we have Columbus Day, October 9th.
Is, in, in the past, it's taken several nights to do this, so we, we may be pushing this
Well, we have plenty of time to do more, Harry.
Yeah, okay.
We did do it in two meetings last year, but sure, we can, we'll have more opportunities. We just need to be sure to set a public hearing no later than November 9th.
Mm-hmm.
Which would mean that at the latest, we would want to set it our October meeting, which I think is the 25th. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Those dates are okay with Anna and the booklet, Ian?
Yep. So shall we set those for now, the first two?
Okay with me.
Budget workshops?
Sure.
So October 12th, 7:30, October 18th, 7:00 PM. Very good. Thank you all. So shall we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution to set a public hearing for the CDBG 2018 application. As you know, we were successful in obtaining $200,000 towards the beginning construction of a Rec Park Annex, the Challenger Field. And we might consider applying again, perhaps first likely lower amount to do some of the other ADA compliant work. And any other ideas that the folks have, we would like to consider. And especially, we would like to consider what the public would like to recommend for a CDBG application. And so we need to set a public hearing for that. And I would suggest we do that for our next town board meeting, which is October 10th. And we have a resolution to that effect. Does that sound good with folks?
But we don't have, we don't have the, the application yet. Fred?
No, I think I shared with you digitally what the CDBG application is, but we certainly can get you another thing about the blank application or what we might consider
Go with what we're proposing.
What we're proposing. No, we don't have that yet. We'll be working with Rec Commission to come up with a defining scope for that. And I'm sure we could have that available by October 10th. And so put on your thinking caps that there's something else that you think we should be applying for or considering. A great to have at that time.
What kind of dollar note for this application? Did you see that already?
Well, my thought is for, if we were to do for Rec Park Annexes, to apply for something a little less than last year. We were very fortunate to get $200,000 out of what was less than a million dollars for Dutchess County. So perhaps $150,000? And that might help us get the pavilion and ADA compliant bathrooms in place. And then we can use the money that we allocate in our 2018 budget. And just so you know, I have allocated half a million dollars to complement that to build out that park. And so any other thoughts you have on projects? All right, so we have a resolution number 78.
63 it is.
63? Where did we get 78?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
Best typing thing.
Best typing. All right.
My good friend, S.G.
Mr. Deputy Supervisor, would you like to use those very vocal cords of yours?
Well, this is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the 2018 Community Development Block Grant application. Whereas the town is considering submission of a 2018 Community Development Block Grant application, now therefore being resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook, that the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish a notice of public hearing regarding the proposed application for a 2018 Community Development Block Grant in the Gipsy Journal and the Kingston Freeman, the official newspapers of the town, honored before October 5, which is not less than five days prior to the date of the public hearing. And the town board of the town of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on October 10, 2017 at
7:35, perhaps?
7:35 PM at the town hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested parties on the said 2017, should be the 2018 Community Development Block Grant application.
That is correct. Thank you, Bill. And do you so move?
So move.
Okay, I would second your motion, your resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'd like to hear your ideas for our next meeting. Okay, the third item on the agenda is discussion of the solar zoning. And that's just a very quick update. That draft that you received last month. Our attorneys are now reviewing and will have some tweets for us to take a look at. We thought maybe it'd be ready today, but hopefully in the next couple of days. And so any other comments that you have, you know, please forward them. And then we'll see at the next meeting what, if any, action we'd like to take. And that is just
Will we, will we receive their report before the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, hopefully in the next couple of days. We, we thought we'd have it for tonight, but not quite. All right, item number four is a resolution to award the bid for the water pump controls. And this is something that we were going to perhaps tackle last month, but we've got it this month, don't we, Hank?
Oh, for me?
We do.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so I don't know how much you would like to talk about this, Hank, or shall we just go ahead and award this bid? We'd be happy to, to do that. What would you?
The only thing I would say is, you know, the first, the bid came in at 39.6 or something, which at that amount, we should have gone out for a formal or major, whatever, request for proposal, major, the formal bid. This was something less than that. So that was too much money. We went back to the, the bidder and we dropped out a couple of things and brought it down under 35. So we're, financially, we're under the wire.
Okay. Are you okay with that adjustment?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There are two things that we don't need at this time, so.
Okay, so it went from 39 some to 34?
Almost 30. Mine is 35 minus $40.
That works.
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, can I impose upon your vocal cords for resolution 64?
Yes, Robert. Resolution number 64 dated September 27th, 2017. Authorize the town of Red Hook to award a contract for water pump house controls upgrade project at Water District Number 1 in the town of Red Hook. Whereas the town of Red Hook has a need for upgrades to the water pump controls at Water District Number 1 in the town of Red Hook. And whereas the town of Red Hook has prepared a request for proposals to solicit qualified contractors for said project, heat project. And whereas after review of the responses, the water board has recommended that Black Electric Inc. be engaged to complete the project and now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that the town of Red Hook hereby awards a project contract to Black Electric Inc. for the upgrades to the water pump controls at Water District Number 1 for the lump sum price of $34,960 as sent forth in the proposal on file with the water board. Now therefore, be it further resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows. Supervisor Reverend McKean, who in his absence, deputy supervisor, is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract for public work with Black Electric Inc. in substantiate form on file with a purchasing agent with such changes as shall not materially affect the substance thereof and which shall be consistent with the terms of this resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. I so move.
Thank you very much, Jim. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve a supplemental agreement. a sidewalk extension. We were contacted early last week by D O T, um, who, as you know, is reviewing our sidewalk project. And, um, they noticed that the crosswalk area there by Holy Cow, the nice thing about that sidewalk project, by the way, for the folks at home, is you'll be able to walk, um, across, there'll be a crosswalk. You can go to the movie and come right across to Holy Cow. Um, they would like to pay for, this is New York State D O T, pay for about twenty-two feet of concrete. Um, there's a little grassy knoll there that attaches to, um, the striping in the Hardscrabble Plaza. So you come across the street, I think I've enclosed here for you a visual. And they would like to make that little grassy knoll also be a five-foot sidewalk that would be perpendicular to the Route Nine sidewalk, so that people can get directly into Hardscrabble Plaza without walking on grass. They don't want people accidentally walking into the driveway, the entrance driveway at Holy Cow. And you can see from this visual, I think there's a, there's a woman standing where the, uh, sidewalk would begin, and that will attach to that striped area on the pavement. So they estimate that cost will not exceed five thousand dollars, including labor and materials, and they will reimburse us a hundred percent for that. Not a difficult decision.
What's funny is, Robert, a few times I've been in there, I wondered why that wasn't part of the project, or why we didn't have a piece of sidewalk there, the way it ends. If you just look at it, it makes no sense.
Apparently, it originally was. I don't know how it got kicked out, but I guess the good news is it's a hundred percent reimbursement. It's back in, and hopefully it'll be, uh, one more safety feature for our residents.
Can I ask, I know there was talk when we first designed the project about having some flashing beacon, or something at a crosswalk, at the Cross Route Nine, is that still in plan, or?
Oh, those flashing beacons are there at both crosswalks? They're not operational at the moment because the striping?
Were they trying them out? Were they trying them out the other day?
Well, they were testing them, but the striping hasn't happened yet for the crosswalk. And so they're not operational, not until all the features of the crosswalk are there. They won't have that, as you know, there's...
I was surprised to see them out there flashing away and pushing buttons and whatever.
And for folks at home, the sidewalk project is not quite complete. Unfortunately, they've had difficulty with one particular, um, area there by the bank, where there was a culvert. It was not the culvert that they thought was underneath there. They've had to redesign a retaining wall, and it has to get state approval. And so, um, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's dragged on a little bit longer than we had hoped. My expectation might, uh, lead us to believe that at the end of the month, or the first couple of days of October, we should be completely finished with the project. And, uh, hopefully you'll find it to be, uh, really good and safe. I see people are using it all the time now.
Looks nice.
We want you just to be careful if you are, because there is a missing piece. We ask that you cross the road safely and go around that, uh, missing tangent. It's, uh, clearly defined and, and, uh, cornered off. Okay, um, we have a resolution.
Do we have to read this for more than a resolution?
We don't. So I can summarize it to you if you like, and this is resolution number sixty-five. It is a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance of one hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marcuselli program, an eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore. And it is the project that I've outlined to you. And, um, it says resolve that the Town Board hereby authorizes the Town of Red Hook to pay in the first instance, a hundred percent. And then you see by the correspondence from the D O T, they will, uh, reimburse us a hundred percent of that total cost. And I make, uh, that resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. We are...
Is, is it clear, is it clear though that it's just a sum of five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Is the extension to be reimbursed?
Yep. And we are, item number six, a discussion on streetlight project update. Just to let you know, uh, our attorney is working diligently on those agreements operating and so on and so forth, um, that are a part of the acquisition from Central Hudson. We hope to have, um, those comments, uh, from our attorney at the next meeting. The consortium is looking for, uh, November fifteenth to go out with the R F P. And just as a reminder, this is the R F P that would include the third portion of the project. That's for installation of the new light fixtures and maintenance. The Town of Red Hook has offered to be the lead applicant, and the consortium, uh, co-applicants, uh, will be joining us. We're now starting to get more and more communities interested, that both our villages, both the Town and Village of Rhinebeck, Town and Village of Newt Falls. So those are just some of the communities that will be partnering, uh, with us on that project. So we'll have more information for you at the next meeting. Uh, but know that the target date is November fifteenth for that streetlight, uh, R F P. And that's all I have prior to, uh, board reports. So if we...
Is there a...
Let's...
A just, there you go.
There is. I was gonna do that at the end, but I realized I missed it at the beginning.
Okay.
Yep. Um, Town of Red Hook Planning Board Report.
Shall I do it?
Uh, could you, Sarah?
Sure. Okay, the planning board met once in September and commenced or continued to review the following applications. An application to re-stripe and place identification signs on six existing parking spaces, change the color of the building, replace existing signage in front of the building, relocate the welcome sign, and replace the face of the monument sign on Route Nine, that's Hanford Supermarket. An application to construct a two thousand five hundred and ninety-one square foot residence with a deck and a porch and an attached garage in the historic overlay district. An application to construct a ten thousand eight hundred and sixty square foot mixed-use building on a one point nine five five acre parcel in the traditional neighborhood development commercial center district. An application to convey three point four six acres of land from the twelve point seven nine acre Rodco parcel to the nineteen point three acre Porcan parcel in the R D three zoning district. An application for a lotline alteration resulting in a three point five acre parcel with an existing house well and septic and a seventeen point five acre vacant lot, flag lot in the R D three zoning district. An application to replace an existing mobile home that was damaged with another mobile home on a one point one point, one point one six acre property on Mill Road in the R one point five district. An application to construct a one car detached garage in Berrytown. An application to demolish an attached garage and construct a twelve by fourteen detached shed in the Hamlet of Berrytown. And they held public hearings and granted conditional approval for the following projects. An application to create two parcels, twelve point six acres and ten point six acres from the twenty-three point two acre parcel in the R one zoning district that, uh, it's partially in the Village of Red Hook. And an application to permit a five accessory, five accessory structures on a five point five acre property in the R D three zoning district. And they also granted an extension to fill the conditions of approval to the D M H A S minor subdivision. That's it.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Um, Jim, we didn't have a report in August from the Z V A. And I notice we still don't have a report, but we do have the agenda. It was printed out. Maybe if you could just summarize?
Yeah, this was pretty much the, I, we didn't have one by pretty much given it to September, but that's, it gives it detail. There were three variance applications, um, uh, that were granted during the August meeting. They did not have a September meeting because they had no business before them. And one was an area variance for a building at Bard. Um, if you'd like the details, I can go into the details of those. And another was an accessory structure for a setback. This is on Linden Avenue. And the third one was at Bard for a little wireless repeater, like an antenna to be, um, positioned on, and they were granted that. On the new addition, I say new addition to the library, it's been there many, many years now. And that, what happens is our tower, um, is overloading, you know, with too much traffic, basically. And so what that'll do, ease traffic and make this, the cell tower reception better for everyone. So a lot of the traffic at Bard will be routed through that rather than through our, and that, and that was granted, and it's a, a, a nucleus. Through everything on this.
Small.
Yeah, small on the bill, on the library. Be new addition to the library building, not on the old Parthenon structure.
That may be why my, my reception is better until...
Yeah, it will be, Harry, because, you know, there's so much traffic with, you know, everybody uses online and all that stuff, so that the idea that they're easy, so, yeah, they're maxed out.
Okay, very good. Uh, Bill, uh, we're moving on to department reports and the assessor's, uh, report.
Well, the assessor's report indicates that, um, they've spent a lot of time this past month, uh, re, feeling questions, uh, by phone regarding school tax bills that went out just recently. And, um, most of them had to do with changes in the exemption being due to the amount of increase in their income and not having to do with anything of assessed, uh, assessment. Um, they've completed two tax bill corrections with the county. They've been processing the petitions that have been received. There are four or five petitions, uh, in July that were received with respect to their assessments, uh, after the board review. And, um, they've been preparing exemption renewals for mailings that go out at the end of the year. The residents are reminded that they would have to return these renewal forms by March one, two thousand eighteen. They've handled about thirteen sales from July thirty-first to August thirty-first in the Town of Red Hook. And, um, surprisingly, the amounts of those sales go from ninety thousand dollars to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, uh, all of them have been, uh, reviewed by the assessor. And they continue updating parcel inventories according to permits and any other information on the parcel. And, uh, continue to do the, uh, review of files in the assessor's office that were inherited by our new assessor. And that's the report by Cheryl Kazluga.
All right, Jim, thank you very much, Bill. And, yeah, I see that she references sales, and it looks like we're on track to have the highest ever real estate sales for the Town of Red Hook, at least to my knowledge, um, in, in recent memory. Another indication that our local economy is, is doing relatively quite well. All right, Jim, there's a building and zoning and extensive reports speaking of economy doing quite well.
All right, to summarize the building and zoning, this is a monthly report for September of two thousand seventeen. There were thirty-three permits issued, twelve inspections conducted, and twenty-one C O C Cs, no complaints. That's a good thing. And a revenue of six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars was collected by the Building and Zoning Department.
Very good. Thank you very much. Jim, we have, uh, a police department report, Bill.
Well, according to the police department report for the past month, there were a total of, um, sixty-seven incidents, uh, reported to the police that were handled. Eight seventeen arrests were made by the, uh, Village of Red Hook Police. And the total number of tickets issued during the period was sixty-six. So it was very dis...
Okay.
Have, have we been, have the animal complaints been handled judiciously now that we've, uh, have a new, new approach to it?
I was gonna say, I have an animal control report. I don't know why it's not printed here, but I can read it to you from my phone if you'd like.
Okay.
We just, we just received two, I believe. So let me pull those up here from Claire. Um, what do you mean a new approach?
Well, uh, well, since we, since we have the A S P C A handling of ours.
Well, that's been over a year.
Well, I know, I know, but I just, um, I haven't heard, heard back.
I, you know, I don't know, it's a good question. We shouldn't, we could maybe plot the numbers and see year to year, you know, what the numbers are, although I'm not, I don't remember what the format of the report was before we had the D C S P C A. I could ask Sue and just kind of run some numbers. I, my feeling, looking at them, is that it's pretty much the same as before, and that typically it's in the summer, warmer months, when there's more light, dogs are out more, you know? And then as it gets colder, we'll see a lot less of the loose dog reports. And it seems like the, the type where a dog is biting another dog or something are pretty much the same as before, but...
The silence has been deafening compared to what, you know, a number of years before.
Okay.
Which, which is a good thing.
There's a lot of talk on Red Hook Moms on, on Facebook generally, and a lot of different Red Hook forums about loose dogs and, um, you know, it's something that, um, unless somebody formally complains to us, I'm going to assume is being handled how it needs to be handled.
That's legitimate, that's...
You know, but we have talked about, um, the town had purchased a microchip scanner in the past, um, a couple of years ago, um, through a local animal rescue society to be able to have our own way to track those animals. And because we don't have a dogecenter, like, on-site anymore, we're trying to figure out where that microchip scanner went. We think we know it's at a local vet's office, we believe. And think about whether it makes sense to maybe get that back and give it to somebody else, like the police, or whoever it is who ends up with the majority of these calls. So we're kind of looking into that, because there are a lot of loose animals, but I think a lot of them, people quickly put them on Facebook, right? They have their phone, they can take a picture, and then they can very quickly get reunited with their owners. So is it really a big deal? You know, maybe Facebook's working fine, you know? There's not a ton of, like, formal complaining, so... Yeah, I do see a lot of it, though. There's a lot of, you know, if people could please keep their dogs leashed and fenced and whatever they need to, to keep them at home, that would definitely be the best way.
If it's working, that's great.
Yeah, um...
Did you want to segue into your report, Sarah?
Yeah, so here, here are the two, um, I'm trying to remember the last time we met, but I, I know these key mentions, so I'll just read them off. Okay, so in July, we had one dangerous dog or related incident, and three loose dogs, and one cat incident. It sounds like a dog ended up biting a pet sitter, and it's been resolved and reported to the Department of Health. And, and that was for July, so then in August... And actually, that seems like a really low number to me for, for a summer month. Um, in August, we had eleven dangerous dog incidents or calls and two loose dogs or related incidents. I think one of those was a repeat incident where somebody had to keep calling about a dog that kept running out. And there was one dog that attacked another dog. So that's the report for August.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're on to the Water District. And we have the chair of our Water Department here. But we won't make you, uh, report it, Hank, if you don't want to. Normally, Jim has that responsibility. What would you like to do?
Well, I can summarize, maybe save Jim's voice?
Okay.
And even check me, see if I missed anything before.
You never miss anything, can't you? It's four pages, so you can summarize it, basically.
Yeah. All in all, things are going well, the pumps, the water supply, the testing. We're done testing for the year. We've had a couple of things going on. We had to, uh, in fact, was done last Friday, the fifteenth, whatever. Uh, we had a communication problem between, from the tank to the tower. So that, we were getting erroneous readings in terms of the tank level. So the pumps weren't turning on and off the way they should. We were getting me, readings of minus something in terms of water depth and whatever. The problem was, the trees have grown up, so that they were blocking the communications. So, um, we had the antenna, um... So we had the antenna at the pump house raised a bigger antenna, longer antenna, higher. And there was something done up at the tank as well, so we're communicating and all as well. We were going to have the fence repair guys, Adam's Fence, to repair the fence up around the tower. There are a lot of dead trees up there. And last year, we had three fallen on the fence, so we needed some fence repairs. We finally got around to, we got them back in contact with us. And by the time they were going to be here, which was the twenty-sixth, another tree fell on the fence. So I had Tom Williams go up and cut that off. He did that Monday. And now we're back in trying to get, you know, get a schedule from Adam's Fence. Not a big deal. I think we're talking about less than two thousand dollars for two or three new top rails and some new barbed wire. But, and it doesn't look much worse than that now. We've got a meter problem. We upgraded, we can no longer buy our old water meters. The old water meters came with this specific kind of remote register that people could walk up and read, and that's what they do. The new registers don't have that kind of a remote. Or you have to use what they call a gun, press it to the meter. It's not a remote reader. But now the, the new meters we're getting are incompatible with that gun, so we're not being able to read them. So we've had back and forth with the supplier and the meter company. It's not resolved yet. What I did find, though, is on the internet, they got through it via eBay, but we can buy some of the older type meters with the older type remotes for seventy-five dollars. So we're going to try to buy five of them, see if they're, you know, worth buying. And maybe we can get a few more just to resolve that problem. There's only ten meters where we have a problem. So if we can buy a dozen or so and replace those, go back to the meters that you can, the remotes that you can read, that'll take care of us for the time being. In terms of upgrading to electronic remote readers, Jerry Gilneck is, which brings the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Went to something called Neptune. Ah, they're having all kinds of problems with it. I don't know. I haven't checked with the village to see how theirs is working or holding up. But it's expensive. You have to get new software and this and that, and you need software updates. So we'd like to stay with the old style meters, the old style registers as long as we can.
Okay.
Other than that, I guess that's...
Is there, one of the items I hear is a dead-end hydrant flushing scheduled Tuesday, October seventeenth, from nine to five P.M. So do the citizens on Panda need to know anything about that?
Oh, no, October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, yeah.
We put notices in the paper, but yes, people on Panda might want to know that because when we flush, it stirs up sediment in the pipes and sometimes they see dirty water. Recently, we've had very, very few, last time I think we had no calls relative to dirty water. But yes, they should be aware, October seventeenth.
We're taking another call, Bill?
No, we didn't have it to schedule in time, according to Bill.
The only other thing, Hank, did you want to say anything, have you said anything about the tank inspection that was completed?
Ah, yes, that was completed back in July, whatever. We got the report, and they're a very comprehensive report. They didn't find anything really serious. There's a couple of things they call emergencies. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. We have to look over the list and decide what, which ones of those are worth fixing. Because we talked again at the last meeting about repaint versus replace. The town of Ulster just made a decision. They're replacing a large four point three million tank or replacing a three million and a four point three, something like that. But point is, repainting their existing tank was going to cost two million something. The new tank, the replacement tank was either three something or just over four. You know, for fifty percent more cost, they get five or six times the life. And you don't know about repainting how long that's going to last. The, the repainting is seldom as good as the original paint. So it's, if you're going to pay a million dollars to get it repainted and there are a million and a half for a replacement, it's almost a no-brainer. So I have to do some more checking, but that's probably what we're going to do. And if we do that, it's not worth spending a lot of money, you know, fixing up this thing.
Just as a reminder, there's quite a bit of money now appropriated from New York State, that two and a half billion dollars towards water, water infrastructure projects.
Yeah, we think, though, that given the condition of this tank, we wouldn't have to replace it for another five, maybe ten years. So we can put that off for a while, you know, benign neglect, as long as it's not dangerous. And we'll have it inspected again another five years. But, you know, the village of Tiffany, village of Red Hook went on for years and years and years with those old tanks.
Right, keep banking the funds so that when we do come, it probably makes sense to, to replace it, that's for sure.
It would.
Well, it's some pretty attractive grant funding. Let's consider that as well, too. Because if we can get a, a large portion of it paid for, right, we'll take a look at that analysis, right?
Okay, I'll see you about that.
Yeah.
When, when it says dead-end hydrant flushing, does that is specific, does that mean on dead-end streets? Or is that a type of hydrant that's not flushed?
It's a dead-end water line.
Okay.
Okay, because water doesn't flow through those pipes, sediment builds up.
Okay.
And we'd like to clean them out once a year.
So is that like specific parts of the water district that the dead-end hydrants are? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, there are...
How to describe it for people who have...
For example, on Linden Avenue, there are pipes from Linden Acres down through Vassar and over to Linden Avenue. They're a dead end. They need to be flushed.
Okay.
There are two or three or four others. And then there are others that have, they're combined. Flushed them along with the dead ends, but they have tended to be problematic. We get multiple, maybe once or twice a year, complaints about dirty water. So there's one on Aspen Wall, Dogwood and Aspen Wall, and there's a couple of others. So we, we do those along with dead ends and call it all dead-end flushing.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Hank. Glad you're here with us tonight. The next is committee reports. Bill, we have your intermunicipal task force report.
Well, at weekly meetings in August and September, the intermunicipal task force continued its discussion of large commercial extraction of natural resources in the town of Red Hook and strategies for the implementation of the moratorium declared by the Red Hook Town Board, August twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, by resolution declaring a local law placing a twelve-month moratorium on large-scale commercial extractive operations in the town of Red Hook. Task force has also been studying and reviewing a draft of a proposed local law, D, for two thousand seventeen, which is captioned a local law to establish a new chapter seventy-nine in the town code, to be known as food trucks, and to amend chapter one forty-three of the town code entitled zoning to prohibit drive-through businesses and formula businesses, and to replace a B-one district in Upper Red Hook with a Hamlet business district. And that's continuing.
Thank you very much, Bill. Harry, we have a very lengthy recreation commission report.
Okay.
If you want to hit some highlights, yeah.
The biggest event of the moment is, is the rebuilding of the tennis court. It's underway in the last few days, and it's being rebuilt at close pace. There's quite a bit of activity there with it. We have a, a grant application pending with the tennis, USTA Tennis Association, to, to contribute to the cost of that. We don't know what, that's pending and, and amating. There's a lot of, a lot of work being done in, in the context of, of the fall and closing, closing the park up for the winter. There's a lot of repairs of equipment that's being done. There are still ongoing links that, that seem to, seem to keep playing longer and longer into the fall. We've done, done work, many of the moms are aware, that the, the kids' playground was a concern with trees. That they have been taken care of. Any potential falling limbs have been, have been removed. And that's kind of the essence of it.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Harry. And just a reminder to the folks at home, we have recycling cans at the rec park. We really urge you and ask you, plead with you, please use them appropriately. If a truckload of recycling material gets soiled or spoiled, all of it gets thrown into the trash, so we really appreciate your cooperation. Okay, we have a tree preservation commission report. Sarah?
All right. They have their monthly meeting on September nineteenth. They had low turnout for hardscrabble day, so they're hoping to get a different site next time. They have been working on the rec park pool sign project. They took out two diseased trees and planted some shrubs, well, took out some shrubs in front of the sign. Anyway, the whole thing looks really nice now. They worked with the rec commission on that and it looks really beautiful. And they've been working on a, that project, the ongoing project on Pitcher Lane that planted some, planted some nice trees in like a right-of-way area, like a, I guess it's sort of like a little grassy strip, right, like a median kind of thing over near Pitcher Lane. Oh, wait, no, Pitcher Lane is the one that's just trees along the road, right? All of those, yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, that's a different one. I'm sorry. So this is Pitcher Lane. They're just doing trees along the road with Ken McGlylerly. So they're just consulting with him about that. And then they are talking, looking at two dead trees in front of the Rooney's Press store. So anyway, they are active and working on lots of projects.
Okay, very good. I think those are all the committee and board reports that we had. Are there any other reports that I'm missing? Okay, if not, and jumping back, because I forgot, we have a couple of budget adjustments and has prepared for consideration. Most of them relate to highway department stuff. We did a shared service with the town of Mylan. We continue to pave the road that split both municipalities. And so we'll be reimbursed by the town of Mylan for that, so there's an adjustment for that. We also, as I mentioned to you at the last meeting, the purchase of the new truck. We've appropriated to borrow only a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. We are going to put down a hundred and sixty thousand. Initially, we thought we would have about ninety thousand dollars from contingency because we, we expensed the previous truck and then we borrowed against it. Now we're appropriating yet another thirty thousand dollars down towards that. And I believe we will do the remaining twenty thousand also before the year end. It's just moving what was projected to be expensed next year into this year. We also have a three thousand dollar adjustment proposed for rec park equipment coming out of contingency. And that is for repairs to John Deere mower. So are those the budget adjustments? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve them?
So who?
Okay, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. At this portion of the evening, we'll take more public comments, if anybody has any. Okay, thank you all very much for joining us. I would like to make a motion at this time that we go into attorney-client.
Can I just acknowledge that I received the supervisor's tentative budget today?
Oh, yes, please do.
Yes, I just wanted to make it official for the minute.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So I feel very official. All right, attorney-client, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you again for joining us, everyone.